Hello, New Bedford. Here back for our candidates discussion. We have a new candidate for office this year. Sean Carney for Ward Four. Ward Four has been vacated by Dana Rivera, so we have a few candidates running there. So, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
So, I guess the first question I ask most of the candidates is, why are you running for politics?
So, I think it's very important, especially in a city like New Bedford, to be very community-oriented. You know, as far as I'm concerned, on my street, I like to know who lives at the house next door to me, the house across the street, because these folks are in our communities. They're hard-working folks, and I think that they need something in representative government that's going to take their concerns directly to the council floor. I've lived my entire life in New Bedford, except for, you know, attending school at Providence College. But when I was at law school, I continued to live in the city and made the commute over to Bristol, Rhode Island, to Roger Williams University. And during that time, you know, from being in the city as a child and growing up, you see a lot of ups and downs and struggles and progress. And I think I'm at a point in my life now where I've educated myself, I've got a good handle on the issues, and I think I can give that the representation that the community members in Ward Four need. I think I can continue the good work of the councillors before me, as well as add some more innovative flavors and new ideas to the council floor, bringing in my own experiences. And I think also that, you know, when we're talking about efficiency in government, government's not an efficient machine. It's not built that way, and for good reason, to make sure that folks can be heard and due process is given to everybody. And I think, though, that I can do a good job in, you know, utilizing my experience as an attorney and other things to make the administration of government more efficient and really spread out the city's services to a point where, you know, all the neighborhoods are getting equal services. Our streets are getting swept equally. Our roads are being improved, and the streetscapes are being updated equally. And I think that that's very important. Thank you. I think that's very important for the residents, and I'd like to bring that to the council floor.
So, let's get into some personal stuff, just to get people to know more about you. How long have you lived in New Bedford?
My entire life. So, I grew up on Jenny Lynn Street. I lived there through my childhood, teenage, and college years. I rented my first apartment on County Street, right across from Dylan's Restaurant, and I purchased my home on Maxfield Street, just right around the corner from there. So, it's safe to say that I've been in the city quite a while and gotten to know some really awesome folks and gotten to see some really great community work throughout my years.
So, family, obviously your mom's an at-large councillor right now.
That's correct.
She's been there a while.
Yep.
How about any wife and kids?
I have a girlfriend, and we've been together going on about three years. We purchased the home together on Maxfield Street. As far as kids, I have a wonderful dog named Brandy, who might as well be a child at this point, but no actual children and no wife yet. But, you know.
So, obviously, so you said you're a lawyer?
Yes, that's correct.
So, what do you work?
So, I work for Payson Smith Holbrook. I work in-house for them, and we mainly do tenant representation for commercial property. So, we have a portfolio of somewhere between four and 500 properties at the moment, and we manage not only the lease negotiations and finding those properties for our clients, but also, you know, keeping up with what's going on after the lease has been signed and while the client is in the property. We handle, you know, a lot of their day-to-day issues that they face, whether that's, you know, a landlord not living up to their obligation in the lease, or something minor, something that they just need to get in touch with the higher-up to figure out what's going on. And we kind of provide that conduit for them.
So, if you have any questions for Sean, I see a bunch of people getting tagged. I get a couple of fans here. Sean's a great guy, went to high school with him. That's John Trevor.
Oh, hey, what's up, John?
You have my vote. Look forward to great work you'll do for the city.
Great.
So, if you have any questions, throw them out, and I'll ask Sean questions. So, we'll get into politics now.
Yep.
What do you, how do you define the role of the city council?
So, I think, one, the city council is your legislative arm in the city. You pass the ordinances, you discuss the budget, you make the budget cuts, and approve the budget for the mayor, and, you know, you also make sure that the mayor appointments are people that are qualified and things like that. But as far as your ward councillor, I believe that should really be your boots on the ground. That's someone that you can talk to, whether it's you need a stop sign, or, you know, folks are just going down the street in an excessive rate of speed, or something larger and more ideological, like the housing taxes and how we're going to solve that problem. So, I think that, you know, as a city councillor, you should be those boots on the ground. You should be talking to the residents, you should be talking to your constituency, and making sure that you understand their issues on both the macro and micro levels. And I think another part of that is making sure that when you bring these issues to the council floor, that you're keeping the community in mind, because, you know, the problems that you see on Blackmore Street are not the problems at the top of Mill Street. They're not the problems on the corner of Maxfield and State. They're not the same problems as what you have downtown. Every little pocket of our community has its own set of challenges and its own set of benefits to it. And I think that, you know, your city councillor for that ward should really be in tune with the benefits and also the issues that the residents face, and that's what they should be bringing to the council floor, as opposed to pressing their own agenda on the council floor. I think that your ward councillors especially should be pressing only the agenda of the community and making sure that those community concerns are voiced and dealt with.
What do you see as the number-one priority for Ward Four? If you get elected and January comes around, what's the first issue that's important to you?
For me, I believe it's looking at the downtown area. We can all agree that it's seen a lot of improvement. It's seen a lot of improvement, and that's economic improvement with our businesses and spreading out the tax base, but also, you know, with our arts and culture. And it's a really pleasant place to be, you know, if you're downtown, whether you're from the area and been here your whole life, or you're new to the area, or you're just passing through. I think, however, it's time that we expanded the lens of focus on improvement, so that way we can start, you know, upgrading our streetscapes in the community and making sure, like I said, that those services are equally distributed, because there's a lot more to Ward Four than just downtown for me. It's all the communities that surround it, and I'm sure you know, it goes all the way up north of Elm Street, all the way to Rockdale in most places, and all the way through over to New Bedford High School's football field. So, I think that, you know, when you're looking at Ward Four, you need to make sure that folks are getting the services they need, and the folks, you know, that haven't seen a streetscape repaired in quite some time, or they have storm drainage problems on their street, I think that those are the issues I'd like to start tackling and making sure that those folks in those communities knows that the city does care about them, and the city wants their communities to thrive and build that sense of community, because I think that once you start going through and improving these streetscapes and making communities nicer, people start to take care of it themselves. People start to treat their communities better and treat each other with more respect, and that's really the sense I'd like to foster in Ward Four, because there's no reason why we can't be the flagship community in New Bedford.
Yeah, Ward Four, so that's, they call it the downtown ward, right?
But it's much more.
It is much more, but the big, one of the big issues I hear is the parking meters. Are you happy with how they are now, or would you change anything?
And I guess I would have to ask, like, what are you hearing about the parking meters? Like, the amount of...
The meter maids are aggressive, the pricing is a little bit higher than other cities because of the newness of the meters. Those are the big complaints I hear.
So, now I can say that, you know, during the actual daylight hours, your normal workday, I would imagine it's a little tough to get work done downtown and have to constantly be worrying about a meter. I can speak from firsthand experience, you know, I used to work in Providence at a small law firm out there, and I was constantly trying to find a four-hour parking space and then having to worry about going and feeding my meter or moving my car. So, yeah, I do think that the parking, the meter folks have been aggressive. I've been tagged quite a few times parking downtown, and just a little bit more about me, I'm also a musician and I DJ as well, so, you know, I spend a lot of time in that area, and sometimes you get gigs during the day where, you know, it's tough to find a place downtown, and if you're parked in a certain area just to unload and load up, you know, sometimes those folks will, you know, they'll have something to say about it. So, as far as the parking downtown, I think that, you know, there's a good amount of parking if you really know where to look, but I'd say that there's always room for improvement, you know, and I think that in a city like ours, you know, it's that medium-sized city, our parking rates should reflect that. Now, you know, I know that we're nowhere near close to Boston as far as our parking prices, but I guess I would have to do a little bit more research and see what, you know, what folks are actually utilizing those downtown, whether it's more folks that are going to work in those downtown offices or businesses, or more folks that are just going there for a quick stop at City Hall or a quick stop at the library to utilize some of the services we have down there. And then I would be able to come up with a much more informed answer, because personally, I've really not had a problem parking downtown, other than, yes, the, I guess you would call them aggressive meter maids.
Yeah, so, for long-term parking, you used to have Custom House Square, they turned it into a park, but right now you have this Xitierian parking garage in Elm Street downtown.
Right.
So, you do have that long-term parking, but obviously if you're coming in, you work somewhere downtown, you want to get, you know, that expediency.
Yeah, and I think especially for the businesses downtown, it's important for parking to be available, because you look at some of the spots, you know, just off the top of my head, Destination Supes who's had, you know, God bless that business owner, because he's had construction in front of his business for years now. And I think it's important that, you know, we, as a city, we realize that it's important for the streetscapes to get updated, it's important to have that infrastructure reinforced. But when it's at the real cost of someone like Destination Supes who's relying on foot traffic and relying on people to be able to quickly park downtown, get into a shop, and then head off back to work for their lunch hour, I think it really creates a burden. So, as far as, you know, the parking downtown, it is a super-important issue, and I think it should be pressed, and we should be exploring what alternative solutions we have, because you're right, the long-term parking on Elm Street or the Xitierian parking garage, you know, both of those are kind of at opposite ends of that downtown hub. So, you know, whether you're parked in one or the other, if you've got to walk smack dab in the middle, you know, some folks might have problems getting around, and, you know, I am concerned for long-term parking, and, you know, I think that the longest you can stay at the meters is three hours.
Two.
Two?
You get two, then you're going to move your car.
Then you've got to move.
Yeah.
And that's always not convenient for folks, and especially, you know, if you're working downtown and you're not, you know, it's kind of like a job, for example, I know several attorneys that work downtown, and when they park, you know, they often have to go leave and meet clients, so it doesn't make sense for them to park in the Elm Street garage, because once you're in, you're in, and once you're out, you're out. Unless you have that monthly pass, there's not really a lot of back-and-forth that you can do there, so.
Yeah, so Leo Chuket, who's also running for at-large, he says, "I like this guy, very well-spoken, educated man. I look forward to working with you, Sean." Meg Feeney, she ran for, I think, at-large a few years back. She says, "Hi, Sean, along with your point of boots on the ground, how do you foresee your best route for future communication with the wards?" I guess it's like constituent services, how are people going to get in touch with you?
So, I think that, one, you can always give me a call. My cellphone number is (508) 542-6773. Once again, that's (508) 542-6773. I love to chat. I promise you, you will probably be on the phone a little bit longer than you intended to be, but that's because I'm concerned, and I want to make sure I have the full picture on things before I go ahead and take action. I think a lot of that is doing your homework and being out in the community and talking to the residents on a regular basis. When there's community events, it's important for you to show up. That way you can communicate with them. When you have folks coming together, it's important that you show up. When there's community meetings, it's important that you show up. And then, other than that, it's being accessible and to make sure that you respond to those phone calls that you missed, and make sure that there's follow-up communication as well. So, I think that's how I'd best serve the ward, in making sure that I'm up to date on what the concerns are. And as far as me getting a message out to the rest of the ward, you know, whether that's, you know, call lists or me making sure that I make, you know, however many of those phone calls I need to make a day to make sure the message gets out there. A lot of folks are on Facebook, obviously, they get a lot of their city stuff or city information that way. I know Ian Abrew does a great job in posting when DPI is going to be doing work or when there's going to be the mosquito spraying. I often share those posts, because I think they're informative, and I think it's important for folks to know. And I also think that when we're looking at our other technology that we use in the city, we should be making sure that we have the technology in order for your ward councillor or your city at-large to be able to get the message out to its residents. And that includes from something simple like a parking ban during snow to something a little bit more major like the mosquito spraying, and you want to make sure that your kids, cats, dogs, et cetera, are not outside when it's happening.
So, we'll talk public safety.
Yep.
So, obviously, it's an issue in some, a city like New Bedford, which is all cities, you know, have, you hear high crime or crime throughout the city. Any ideas on how to keep reducing the crime level in the state of New Bedford?
So, yeah, so, to that point, I think right now, the city in New Bedford has a pretty sizable crisis with opioids, and that, you know, includes, that kind of crisis incorporates several things, and I want to keep it on public safety. So, for example, I'll just say, you know, incorporate several things like the violence between gangs over drug territory, things like that. I think what we need to be doing is we need to be giving the resources that the police need, we need to be giving them those resources, and as well as coordinate with our district attorney's office to make sure that we're building responsible cases with accurate evidence against folks that are dealing the poison out to our streets and against the folks that are committing the violence, because I think that right now, you want to make sure that you're building these responsible cases, so you keep these folks out of our communities and you keep them, you know, once they're breaking the law and committing violent crimes or selling drugs and selling poison to the youth and the young adults and the adults of our city, I think that it's important to keep these folks out of our community, and public safety ties in well with that. And I think that's just making sure the police department is supported and that they're getting what they need, and they're getting the health care they need off-the-clock, as well as, you know, the support they need on-the-clock from their fellow officers, as well as the technology available to them.
On that, though, I find that, you talk to the chief police, Cudero, and some of the police officers, they'll tell you it's like, it's like five to 10% of the bad players that are in the city that keep repeating the same crime, but the judges are kind of throwing them back on the street.
Right.
What's your view on that?
So, I think that, you know, one, just to be clear, the city council doesn't have much to do with the district court in New Bedford. It's, you know, the district court in New Bedford is run by the state, it's run by the Commonwealth, those judges are appointed by the governor. So, you know, as far as what the judges are doing, you know, other than helping, you know, advocate on behalf of the residents of the city, there's not much the city council can do. Now, I think especially with, however, our police force, you know, the judges are letting these folks go on bail, but there are also other warnings they get. They get, you know, the 209A warning that says, or not a 209A, my apologies, they get a bail warning, basically, that says, you know, if you commit another crime, there's a possibility that your bail and your time outside of jail will be revoked, and you will have to await trial over at Bristol County. I think that as far as the way that the judges have been letting people go, I think that, you know, it's a tough line to walk, because we value, you know, our rights so dearly in this country, our right, you know, against a reasonable search as Caesar's, our right to a fair trial, our right to just move freely about the Commonwealth and move freely about the country. These are rights that we hold very near and dear to us, and I think, you know, and not to say anything bad about the judges we have in our system, but it's a very tough decision to say, "I'm going to keep you off the streets," especially when you look at some of the evidence and some of the things like that. I think that it's a tough decision for a judge, and I don't think they're making them lightly. I would like to see the bench get a little bit tougher, but like I said, the most...
On the repeat offenders more.
Yeah.
I'm not concerned about the first time.
Right, exactly.
Everyone's innocent until proven guilty, but if you've got a 40 arrests on your record...
On your BOP sheet, yeah.
I think it's time for judges to maybe...
To hold these guys for a little bit.
A little bit stronger.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I 100% agree with that, and like I said, especially for things like repeat drug offenders that are dealing the drugs, not so much repeat drug offenders that are caught using or possessing drugs, because as far as that goes, I think recovery and treatment is the answer, as opposed to jail time, you know, for minor possession charges, especially where you have, you know, opioids, it just knows no boundaries. It's a drug that rich kids get on, it's a drug that poor kids get on, it's a drug that goes across racial and socioeconomic lines. And like I said, it's something that I'm very concerned about, and I think that the city as a whole should really be looking at drafting some sort of comprehensive plan and set some progress-tracking milestones and make sure that, you know, we're abating this crisis before we reach a point of catastrophe.
Yeah, we'll stay on that, then, the addiction. Sometimes philosophy of a candidate is important. So, in your view, is addiction a choice or a disease?
I think that, you know, certain folks are genetically predisposed to addiction, and I believe that everything starts off as a choice. And I think the point of addiction is, addiction is where you hit the point where it's no longer a choice, and it becomes a physical, chemical thing that your body craves, and, you know, it's incredibly sad, and it's, you know, nobody, I don't think, wants to be addicted to a drug. I don't think anybody ever wants to end up in that sort of situation when they're first using or first trying these things. And I think the solution is, you know, preventative education, it's outreach, it's making sure that the kids know there are better options out there and better ways to fill your time. And I also think that there should be more programming after-school for those folks that, you know, might not be into drama, or might not be into sports, or might not be into band, or something like that, for them to foster some sort of economic independence and keep them busy and off the streets and keep them as far away from these dangerous drugs as possible.
So, we'll take another question from social, Facebook here. So, William Schumann says, "Will you fight to get the Brave Act enacted within our city to help military and veterans?" I don't know what the Brave Act is, but I think there's stuff out there to, basically, I think what he's asking is, like, so Fall River, I've talked to, like, Mayor Creo out there, and their goal was zero veterans on the streets.
Yep.
And I guess they achieved it, per what he's saying.
Mm-hmm.
So, is there something you could do to help get military veterans off the street?
Yeah, I think especially for our veterans, they've put in the service to our country. They've used bravery, they've used their training, they've used their social skills, they've used the technology available, they've been, you know, our veterans are kind of on the cutting edge of our society. They're, you know, folks that we should be making sure are taken care of, because they've risked their lives to take care of us. And when you think about what's great about veterans is they've signed up to do this to protect mostly people they have never and will never meet. And I think that there's a great amount of respect that should be given to them and a great amount of aid that should be given to them. As far as homeless veterans, that's a real problem in my eyes. I don't think that you should return from Iraq, or Afghanistan, or the Middle East, or even, you know, other stations out in North or South Korea and come home to a country where you don't actually have a residence and you don't have a place to stay, I think that, stay, rather. I think that's incredibly heartbreaking, so I would like to do whatever I can, whether that means, as far as getting the Brave Act passed, you know, I haven't read up on...
How do you feel about that?
I've heard the term passed around. I have a very general knowledge, in no way is it sophisticated on what the legislature is and what it entails as far as the nitty-gritty, but what I can say, if it's for making sure that veterans come home and have homes to go to, and making sure that those who we failed in the past by not providing that kind of a service are able to access those services, I believe that's very important, and that was something I would firmly stand behind, yes.
So, we'll move on to another topic, marijuana, retail marijuana specifically. So, New Bedford's kind of like the last city that might get one. Talking to the mayor, we might get one next year. So, we got three community host agreements right now...
Yep.
...that are in the works. I think they've been approved by the mayor, but now it's said they can't in a control commission in Boston. So, New Bedford's like the last city to potentially get one. What's your view, has the city council moved too slow, moved just in time, too fast? What's your view on that?
As far as, well, I guess I'll address the elephant in the room, is whether I'm for recreational marijuana being sold in retail shops. I can answer that by saying yes, because I believe in the law, and I believe that, I believe in the power of the folks to decide what they'd like to see in their communities. So, you know, the referendum vote got passed, so I don't, you know, as a perspective for potential business owners in that industry, I think that, you know, that the laws, now that the law had been passed, I think that it was time for the city to start offering, you know, this source of revenue to its residents and to the folks that want to come in and build that revenue. Now, with that said, I think it's extremely important that the city be responsible about this, that you really look into who you're giving your community agreements to and you're checking the correct boxes. I think you need to look into, you know, the government and the governance of those community host agreements and what the city is allowed to and not allowed to do under those with relation to the pot shops. And, you know, I think you should make sure that you zone it and that you place these pot shops very carefully with a good amount of review, and I think that the city has done that. Now, like I said earlier, government is not built to be efficient, and with something new like this, you do have to check your boxes and cross your Ts and dot your Is, especially because, you know, it's something new to retail, or at least, you know, it's new to being able to legally purchase and be, you know, kind of not done behind closed doors. So, I think, you know, it's a great way for the city to get some tax revenue, it expands our tax base. I think that, you know, when you look at the statistics, marijuana scientifically has been proven less harmful to you than alcohol, however, you know, most folks will say that there's not enough out there to educate themselves on it.
If I could just, because I think we got that point, that it's okay to, I think you're for it, obviously, but what about, do you think the city councils moved fast enough on this, because we are like the last city?
Yep, I think...
Now, cities that move fast, like Fall River, have some pretty major issues right now.
That's correct.
So, you think we're, you know, is it in the right speed?
I think...
And have you looked at the, you know, you said the zoning, right?
Right.
So, a lot of people will tell you that the city kind of zoned marijuana out, because it's like, you look at the zone map, it's like 90%, you can't put it.
Right, that's correct.
So, I guess that's the question, is it, let's start off in one word, is it too fast, slow, or just right?
I think it is somewhere between just right and too slow.
Okay.
I would have liked to see the process moved up quicker, and that has nothing to do with my personal ideology on people that smoke marijuana, or people that use marijuana, or people that distribute marijuana. It has to do more with, you know, folks that spent a good amount of time and money developing a business that they were told was going to be legal in the state, a good amount of time and money on research, lobbying, et cetera, et cetera, to get this off the ground. And I think that when it came time for the city to decide where you're going to go, like I said, it has to be chosen very carefully, very strategically, make sure it's being done responsibly and being done safe, but at the same time, I also think that there needed to be a little bit more urgency with how we address this and make sure that, you know, we're pushing this along. I can tell you from my experience with doing commercial real estate deals, time can really kill something. You know, time is a major killer for a lot of business decisions and a lot of business people.
Did you see the one that was, they were trying to open up on the bridge at the old strip club?
Yes, I did see that that was happening.
And they got timed out, basically, I think.
That is correct, yeah, and I found that to be, you know, kind of sad, because they, it looked like they had a pretty good plan, a pretty good vision for what they wanted to do with that building. I understand the folks in the community were concerned about the proximity to the playground and things like that, and also the proximity of where it was, but at the same time, I feel like a pot shop is a less, if you're just driving by, it's certainly a lot less inconspicuous, or it's a lot more inconspicuous than a strip club.
Yeah, and I think...
And I don't, I think it attracts, you know, probably a more savory clientele to it than a strip club, nothing wrong, you know, no prob, I don't have anything against people that would attend either establishment, but...
But across the street, it's not like it's like a cross street on a small street. It's literally like, you know, the bridge crosses over, so kids aren't going to cross over into that area.
Exactly, I understood that, yeah. So, yeah, I think, you know, I think that the city kind of dropped the ball there, and not to point fingers at anyone in particular, because I think that city government is a more collaborative effort than that, and there can't be really one person or a group of people that you really point fault at, or a small group of people. You know, I think that everyone's got to kind of share the ownership of the city council that's on the city council, and share the ownership of those decisions, even if you vote for or against something, you know, it is a collaborative effort. And I think that the collaborative effort, like I said, could have been handled with a bit more urgency. That way, these folks aren't getting timed out, and their investors aren't walking away from the table, and they're not losing money and potentially losing, you know, a stream of revenue, both for themselves and for the city.
Did you see the article, Seattle Times, after the last debate, there was talk of some of the city council was taking money from people connected to the marijuana. Would you, would your campaign take money from, if you were already in office...
Yep.
Would you take money from the marijuana industry if you had to, if you're voting on it?
Well, for the, yeah, for the office of, for the office of campaign finance, you you can't accept corporate checks, um, so anyone that would, is involved in the marijuana industry, uh, that gives you any sort of donation, you know, has to be from their personal funds. Uh, with that said, you know, um, I've accepted a donation from someone involved in the marijuana industry, um, and, you know, a lot of other councils have, and I really don't see anything wrong with it, because the donations that you're getting are usually, you know, the price of the ticket to your fundraiser. Uh, and I really don't know anyone on or off council right now that can be bought for thirty dollars or forty-five dollars, you know, um, and especially, you know, when you look at, I, I heard shots being fired at Mr. Pentagonas, um, but he's also just a landlord and I believe that he's going to rent to you as long as you can pay your rent and as long as you're going to run a lucrative business and you're, if you're going to be a long-term tenant, I mean, it's a good decision for you. I don't think he cares if you sell pot or paper or plastic.
What about a cap? There's been talks of, so obviously liquor licenses, you have caps.
Right, right.
And I, I've seen cities try to push caps like in Fall River, but the mayor there vetoed it. Would you support a cap in New Bedford or just let it kind of free market go?
Well, I think that a cap would all depend on how many qualified folks you have that are ready to run this kind of retail operation or this kind of processing operation or some kind of agricultural cultivating operation. Um, you know, putting a cap on it, I believe, one, it kind of, it could shut out qualified folks to run these businesses, um, but at the same time, you know, we'd have to see what the volume of folks that want to get involved in this industry is and we'd also have to see how qualified are, are pool of folks that want to get, you know, um, licensed in this industry. So maybe a cap is not solution, I think the ca- you know, maybe the cap's not the solution if you want to just keep, make sure it's qualified folks that are, uh, able to do this and do it responsibly and do it while working with and not against the city and, and the ordinances that the city passes. Um, in order to do that, I think that you just got to make sure that you, A, monitor the licenses and the licensees that you already, uh, have decided on and B, when you're giving out new licenses, make sure that, you know, they're fulfilling certain criteria that the community thinks is going to be right. Because like I said earlier, the same concerns that you have at the bottom of Blackmore Street are not the same at the top of Rockdale. You know, we all have overarching concerns, we can all agree that the property tax is too high, but when it comes to smaller things and the way that the communities interact with each other and the way that the residents feel about their backyards, that changes on a street by street, small little pocket by small little pocket, and I think it's important that we take those folks, uh, and those concerns into consideration when we're talking about distributing these licenses and maybe be a little bit more picky and choosy with who gets them.
Well, let's talk, so you just brought, you brought up property taxes, so we'll talk that. So city council, in my view, gets away with, we lowered your rate, but you're still paying more property tax, so last year we, they lowered the rate, but the...
The assessments went up.
The assessments went up, so I think it was two-twenty per homeowner, it went up last year. Much higher than say, um, places like Dartmouth or Haven.
Yep.
Um, is there something that you can do as a city councilor to help with that?
Yeah.
Or is the discretionary spending too high that you're like, can't?
So I...
I'm sorry, the non-discretionary.
The non-discretionary, so, um, I think that, you know, we could sit here and then we could talk for the next six hours about the property tax. Uh, I'm sure your viewership would, would drop considerably and, um, but, you know, uh, to kind of break it down into, into, you know, kind of short pieces, um, I think, one, what we need to do is we need to look at the budget, um, and see what cuts we can make, you know, what cuts are within our discretion to make and start making those cuts. Um, I think that part of it is making surgical cuts, and I'm not saying you take out whole social programs, I'm not saying you take out whole departments and gut people and get people fired and, and, and let people go and downsize. I'm saying that there are places where you can make surgical cuts.
Well, tell me, what do you, what do you see some you think you could?
So I think, you know, one, um, I think the IT department, you can make some certain cuts there, uh, and not as far as what you're paying the folks and not as far as the resources you get them, um, but as far as some of that extra stuff around, because, you know, when you look at the recent hack on the city, uh, and things like that, you know, I don't blame any one person, I blame, you know, an administration of, uh, the city for that hack, because, you know, when you look at things, all these government agencies should be working collaboratively with each other and sharing ownership of what happens in the city. Um, but the other thing is, is I think that, you know, along with like some budget cuts, there's plenty of properties that the city owns that are not being used but that are still being maintained. And you and I as taxpayers in the city are going to be paying into maintaining and securing these properties to make sure that they're, you know, up, they're up to snuff, um, they're up to snuff and up to code, uh, so the city's not getting violations from the Commonwealth and things like that. But I think that it's time for some of these properties to maybe start going to market and be aggressively marketed to folks that can actually use them to bring something to the community. Um, I think that it's super important for us to look at where the city has those areas of fat and the extra and start trimming it, because it's not fair for our tax people or our taxpayers to shoulder the burden of paying for the maintenance of properties not being used and with real no plan to go forward.
So we'll move on to, we'll call this the lightning round, move on a few that will give some, maybe some short answers to, um, panhandling. So is that freedom of speech or are we doing, or is that something that we can curtail a bit? And how would you do it?
Okay, so I think as far as panhandling, um, I think that the city should set up a permitting system for that and I think that it should be a limited amount of permits that you give out per year. I think that the fee for that permit should be like almost nothing, um, because if you are qualified to, uh, ask folks for money and panhandle, then I would imagine that I would like to see some sort of, um, proof that you are indigenous and that you need this sort of thing, because I think what happens is a lot of times you get folks, uh, that are not necessarily in need of that sort of money as other folks and it really, it real- it's a real detriment to the folks that actually do need it. Um, so yeah, panhandling, uh, free speech, but I think should be permitted, uh, in the city and I think the city should have some sort of control over, over that.
Uh, residential waivers, so, you know, mayor puts up a bunch of, uh, resident waivers and the city council usually approves them all. Is that something you're okay with or do you think we should push more harder to get people, you know, who live in the city to get these higher paying city jobs?
So resident waivers as far as folks that are, uh, that are hired by the city to live in the city?
Yep.
Okay, so that's a two-part question. One, I think it's important that you get qualified folks in and you reach out to a qualified candidate pool. Two, I think before you start handing out resident waivers, you should be offering these positions to folks that actually live in the city, especially for city jobs that are much more beneficial, you perform much better wh- while knowing the neighborhood and living in the neighborhood. Um, so yes, resident waivers, okay, if you are unable to find a candidate that's qualified from your original candidate pool of who lives in the city, which I think we have extremely qualified candidates in the city for, for a number of jobs and I think that, you know, we fail at marketing the job openings to those folks and I think that's why the city doesn't see, uh, those folks kind of, you know, taking those positions. I think that we need to do a better job of letting know what fo- what, a better job of letting know, people know the positions we have available.
Okay, last question, um, public housing.
Yeah.
So there's, generally, there's always thousands of families wait, on a waitlist in New Bedford.
Mm-hmm.
Are you for, um, status quo, add in more, add in less housing or something to that effect?
So I guess that, uh, depends on, if you're talking about adding more housing, it's talking about what are you paying as a city to get that, who's shouldering that tax burden? What infrastructure do you have available that can be converted? And what infrastructure do you have available that you cannot convert? Um, and I think that the question kind of lies there, you know, you have thousands of folks waiting on the public housing list, yes. Um, but right now, the city does have a lot of folks in public housing and the folks that live in public housing aren't, are already not experiencing, uh, equality and services of, eh, for the, you know, the limited amount of folks we have. So I think we need to, um, make public housing available, because it's very important, you know, having folks, uh, being able to afford, uh, a place to live and things like that that's subsidized by the state and the city. However, I need to make sure that we're not putting folks into public housing and then neglecting them, because I don't think it, it's fair for the folks that have lived in public housing before for many years, um, to be, you know, to be neglected and, 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 or feel neglected. And I think that, you know, you need to make sure that you're taking care of the folks that are already there, um, before we start adding some more in. Um, and, and, and that might, that might require, you know, just looking at how we distribute services in our public housing and seeing what tweaks we can make to that. Um, because, you know, I think a lot of things are, it just takes a little bit more, uh, talk and a little bit more collaborative, uh, thinking and, and more heads at the table to kind of just talk through the issues. And I think that also involves getting representatives from the community and to talk with your city officials as well, so they can tell you exactly what's going on and what services they have that they get that are fine and what services they get that are not so fine.
All right, so, um, we'll wrap it up. So how can people find you online, website, social media?
Uh, so, yep, they can find me at Carney for Council, both on Instagram, Twitter and Facebook. No landing page yet, it's in the works, they're very expensive and, um, you know, I think that my dollars are best spent, um, within the ward and making sure that I can get out into the community, um, making sure that I have stuff that, you know, um, literature and things like that, that I can hand, uh, folks face to face. And I think that that's, uh, I, I find that I, I, I enjoy that a lot more too than posting on a website. But like I said, uh, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, Carney for Council, um, Twitter and Instagram, obviously one word, um, and then Facebook, it's, it's, it's Carney, number four, and Council.
All right, so thanks for coming in.
Thank you for having me, I very much appreciate the opportunity.
Yeah, so October first, you just heard from Sean Carney, um, Ward Four, so make sure you get out and vote, no matter who you vote for. Uh, let's get some decent turnout for October first and heading into November's election. So thanks for tuning in, guys.